Council meeting, December 17, 2024. It is coming up on six. We'll have the invocation by Alderman Boudreau and the pledge by Alderman Saucy. If you'd please quiet your silence, your phones, and please stand.
Heavenly Father, tonight we pray that you continue to shine your grace upon the Board of Aldermen to strengthen our resolve to serve the residents of Abita Springs with clarity in all of our endeavors. Please continue to give us the grace to make correct decisions that will provide Abita Springs with continuous improvement for the benefit of the residents. Reveal to us how to hear the needs of the entire community and be grateful to the residents. Let us understand the residents' motives are all well-intentioned and guide us in our responses to the residents. We pray in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible to all.
He scared me when he started that so loud.
Okay, we start off, we have a public hearing discussion of instrument 2024-007, an ordinance to establish the town of Abita Springs' operating budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025. Comments from the Aldermen?
I'll hold my comments until we get to the whole business.
Anybody else?
Really haven't had a chance to look at it, so.
All right. Comments, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't have much time to absorb all of it, but there were a couple of things that I think are general that I wanted to say. And that is some of the noticeable projects that are included in the budget, noticeable from the point of view of the town citizens and the budget, included the $90,000 for ordinance writing, which is going to a contractor, and I think it was more than $100,000 on messing with the town circle. And I just wanted to say, I really thought that things like that ought to be discussed individually, rather than we only get to comment on them when they're glomped together in the whole budget like this where there's other things going on. I think those are important enough projects that the citizens should have had a say in, or at least the chance to comment on whether they ought to be done and whether the amounts involved were reasonable. I don't think either of those are reasonable, but I won't go into any more detail about it. I just wanted to say that stuff like that, I think ought to be pulled out and discussed by the public at these meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, too.
Hi, my name is Byron Arman. I live at 220927th Street in Abita. First of all, I would like to say that I would encourage the town council to reference a previous letter that I submitted in an analysis of the, one of the, I believe it was the August financials was the basis of it. And I urge them to consider that in their 2025 budget estimate. I did have, additionally, I did have some time to review the budget instrument as proposed, and I do have a few comments on that. First of all, the page that references the, what is it? The budget message, there's an item in here under Public Works. The paragraph in it seems to be referencing the expenditures and not the revenue. Okay, so I would suggest to make a note of that, so you can revisit that. And I briefly did a review of.
Sorry, you're talking about this paragraph, right? This one?
Yes. I briefly did a review, and if you've had a chance to look at the budget instrument, the supplemental sheets have the 2024 actual budget, and then they have the projected 2024 budget as well as the 2025 budget. If you look at the 2024 budget and compare it to the budget in the budget worksheets for the 2024, it doesn't always match. So there's some discrepancies there that needs to be looked at and addressed. In addition, I briefly did an analysis of the ratio of salary to benefits and retirement packages, and I found a very broad deviation in that. I won't get specific about it, but I'll say it varies anywhere from 1.33 to 1.8 as far as a markup factor based on salary, which I would suggest to take a look at that as well. You know, in my past experiences, those markup factors should be pretty close in tolerance and just maybe a few points different.
Point five.
Not as much as the swing that I've seen. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nobody from the board. Okay, well, that's all we have to do for the public hearing. We'll go on to mayor's announcements. In mayor's announcements, we've got, we sent you all, I know, we sent the board two proposals that we got from two CPA firms. One was Robert Furman's group, and the other one was DHHA, which is a group that does Madisonville and a bunch of other municipality types. So wanted to know if y'all had any opinions or comments on either one of those. They showed, it had the pricing and all that on it and all, yeah. What's that?
He was just saying.
No, I'm just saying in the mayor's announcements, I just sent it to you. Yeah, I was just saying, you know, if y'all, you know, we're trying to move forward with that. And so, you know, want y'all's opinion.
Yeah, we've long needed that. We will look at that and see which one, that one from Madisonville looks pretty good.
And is that the full number of proposals you expect to get?
Yeah, we've called a couple others, but we hadn't gotten anything back yet.
I mean, I read through them since, I mean, you sent them today. So I mean, I read through them, and we can talk about them further. But were there actual proposed numbers on each of them? Or we, maybe we're missing a page. I didn't see any numbers in the proposal from Griffin and Furman.
Numbers like an amount they're going to charge?
Correct.
Yeah, they were.
It was just services, but I didn't see.
No, you might be missing. Yeah.
Okay.
There was, there was an amount.
I can look again, but, you know.
You don't have it. Yeah.
I thought they were pretty reasonable, considering what, you know, what we've been losing. I think it's well worth it. It's cost-effective to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that, you know, that we are looking. You know, if y'all have any particular opinion or anything you want to, you know, want us to consider, please, you know, let us know. The Lonesome Development versus Town of Abita Springs, we have Andy Wilson here, who is going to kind of give us a little update on where that is. I know that was a concern of some of the people, so want to make sure that we, you know, we cover that and get that done. Mr., is Mr. Wilson?
I'm Andrew Wilson with a milling firm here in Mandeville. I'm lead counsel for the work that has gone on that's led to the appeals in this matter. We were not the original trial counsel, so we came in after a pretty adverse decision. So there's, the original decision was a finding of 5.6 million in damages and 563,000 in attorney's fees. So all the appeals were exhausted in that part of the case. But the judgment in that case allowed for a specific performance, which means the district court ordered that the town has to comply with the development agreement between Lonesome Development and the town to develop the Abita Meadows development. And they have to comply with the letter of the development agreement. Problem is, the development agreement was put together before they realized there was a problem with sewage capacity. So if they connect the development to the Abita Springs wastewater treatment plant, as it says in the development agreement, that'll cause an environmental disaster. But the courts ordered them to do it anyway. And the attorneys for the developer have said they don't care if there's sewage in the houses, that you're going to do it. So that's where we are. So we're trying to oppose that because obviously that doesn't make a lot of sense. And we offered, what we did is the mayor came up with a series of alternatives to try to resolve the situation. And the judge had said, well, that's great, come forward with these development alternatives. And we did, and the engineer, the town engineer did. And the developer just said, no, we're not doing any of that. We're going to pump the sewage into the houses. So that's the way they want to do it. So that's what they said in the courtroom to me. So it's in my head, and I heard it. So I'm just telling you, they're saying to go ahead, and they've been told that if they do this by the town's engineer, there's a formal expert report, which is in the record. And it says that if they do this, there will be sewage in the houses. That's in the record. So that's actually out there, and that is going to be the result. So this shouldn't be happening, but that's the way it is. So we had sent a letter in the middle of last year asking the developer to consider these alternatives. But if they're going to proceed as they will, the mayor said they would not bar any progress forward on the project, but that they proceeded at their own peril. Because if they do all these worthless connections and find out they don't work, or that an engineer won't approve them, then they're going to come back for more damages against the town. So that's why that was in the letter. But in this particular situation, the, one of the requirements that the developer has to have is an engineer that will say that this is a proper connection and that this will work. But they can't find an engineer to say that. The town engineer has said, under no circumstances will he approve this, and he says it will not work and will cause an environmental disaster. So he says, we shouldn't be doing this. So at this point, the whole project is held up because the developer can't get this engineering plan, or this engineering opinion. But instead of getting the engineering opinion, they moved for contempt against the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, saying that they are blocking this particular project from going forward when the town has actually fulfilled all of the requirements that are set forth in the development agreement to the letter, whereas the developer has not. But for whatever reasons, the district court is ignoring that. And now the First Circuit Court of Appeal has likewise ignored it. And we just got our opinion after we argued the case before the First Circuit. This is up in Baton Rouge. And they have decided that they're going to go 100% with what the judge said originally. And that means that the mayor is going to go to jail because he's doing his job. And that's where we are now. We, the opinion was issued on Friday, and so the mayor asked me to come in to take any questions you might have as to the status of the case or any aspect of the opinion. And we intend to file a petition for rehearing before the First Circuit Court of Appeals to reconsider the decision, point out all the factual inaccuracies that they didn't address, and hope for the best. But it's very difficult to get a case like that back before the court and have them reconsider it. But that's what we're trying to do. If that fails, then we would go to the Louisiana Supreme Court. The appeals to the Louisiana Supreme Court are discretionary in nature, so the court does not have to hear them. You have to make an application, it's called a writ application. And they can just say, we don't want to hear it, and that's it. They only take about 7% of the cases. In the past three years, I've had two that have been taken up, and I got them reversed. So I have a confidence that we have a shot at this. But it's, it is a shot. It's not, it's not something that's a sure thing. But some of the First Circuit errors are blatant. They just ignored basic facts. And so we have a chance of having them reexamine their own findings and see whether or not there's any factual issues that they need to revisit, which would change the outcome of the case.
I had a question about it myself. I read it. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm reading something that I'm not familiar with, you know, what all of this actually means, but you can correct me if I'm misunderstanding it. It looked to me like what that court was finding was, well, he's guilty of contempt because he hasn't made any progress, that he would just have to show some progress in trying to fulfill the agreement. But the way I understood it when you were here last was there was no such thing as progress. It was either on or off. You either did specific performance or you didn't. And that there was no, well, you had to show some, you know, like, I'm trying to work it out. I'm trying to do something to fulfill my end of it. And they were acting, it seemed like in the opinion, they were acting like, no, no, no. He just has to do something to show that he's trying to make some progress toward the goal.
Well, the thing is, the development agreement speaks for itself, and it says what the town has to do. The town's already done that. The town's already made the expenditures and done what they were supposed to do on the development agreement. There's nothing else he can do. So it's nice to say he should be making progress, but there's nothing he can do to make it go forward. The impasse is with the engineering issues, and the court didn't even look at those. And that's the whole.
So did I read that right? I mean, did that?
That's what they said, but it doesn't make any sense because there's no further progress he can make. Because he did everything, the town did everything. They paid everything. So the only thing that's left is the elements of the development agreement that the developer hasn't fulfilled. That's where we are now.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the engineer just says it won't work, but he's not giving us any corrective action about what we need to do to make it work.
Well, it's an entire change in the schematic. The whole layout is wrong. The town's wastewater treatment plant never had the capacity, and the prior mayor had represented to the developer that it did at the request of the developer's consultant. So since the system doesn't have the capacity as it's configured presently, you have to do some other different configuration.
Well, I understand that we're now connected to Arrow, to Utilities Inc., and that they do have the capacity to take us. So evidently, it's just a few pipes or something that need to be changed to create the capacity. And I think that'd be a lot cheaper than going through a lot of legal stuff if we just put new pipes in and go ahead and let them come on.
We thought so, too, and that's why we offered those two choices. The first connection is to go to the existing wastewater treatment plant and then to Arrowwood. The other one is to have a direct line to Arrowwood. The developer rejected those out of hand. So if they reject those pipes, there's nothing we can do. And as far as legal expenses, the insurer is paying for all the legal expenses. The town is not paying any legal expenses.
What is the maximum on that, by the way?
Maximum what?
The legal fees that the insurance company will pay.
So far, they've agreed to everything that we presented. We just gave them a new budget, and they said, fine, for all of what we're talking about doing.
What would you plan on doing in the future?
Yes. We gave them a budget.
EJ, I'm sorry, you finished?
Yeah, I was just going to say that this whole system is an atmospheric system. It's not really a pressurized system, so I really kind of doubt if we'd get sewage in the houses, unless somebody turns a valve off or it gets blocked up some kind of way. And I'm sure we can monitor that.
Well, if you want to talk to the.
Especially with the new things that we're putting on our lift stations, we can monitor if anything's getting close to being blocked up.
This is, I'm not an engineer. The engineer, the town engineer, if you want to talk to the town engineer, the town engineer can explain it to you why you're mistaken.
I think I will.
That'll set it all out.
Mr. Wilson, I have a few questions.
Sure.
One, I'm not sure what percentage of what you're saying is actually in this ruling, but it says by May 2018, Abita Springs consultants and engineers had approved Lonesome's plans for its infrastructure construction phase of the Abita Meadows.
What year is that?
2018.
That wasn't true.
Well, that's in this ruling that you just received on Friday.
That's one of the erroneous, they put in facts that are not true.
And then I also found kind of interesting, and I'm not an attorney, and I had to look.
The whole issue was that the mayor, this is how it worked. The consultant for the developer came to the former mayor and said, you need to give me a letter like this that says you have a capacity to take on the sewage from this particular development. He gave him the letter. It was a letter from another town, at the town of Addis. And that, it was, he had done the same thing with that town to get them to go along with another development. So he gave the letter to the mayor, and in it, it says, I have conferred with the town's engineers, and the town has the capacity. But he never conferred with them. That's the problem. But we, that's what are under the bridge now, other than the fact that we brought out that letter, and we showed the two letters, the one where he wrote all over it, his little scribbles, which is the basis for his opinion, that they had the capacity, that was the mayor. And then we brought out the new letter, which was with all the corrections taken out of it with no handwritten notes on it, and that's what's in the record. But we put it in the record, so we have raised that issue, saying that there was no engineering opinion ever.
Excuse me, was the Lonesome Development, were they supposed to also have their engineers' certified capacity?
There were, it's required under the ordinance.
Separately from our engineer?
That's correct.
And was there any documentation of that?
They have refused to. They will not do that. There's an ordinance that requires that, and they refuse to do it. And we brought that out in the appeal as well. So they're not coming in with clean hands, and they just made stuff up about the mayor not cooperating when that was not what happened. What has happened is they thought that they could convince this judge to issue a contempt order and frighten the mayor into just cratering and going along with whatever they want to do. And that's where it is now.
I just find it very interesting that in this 15 pages, the judgment became final and definitive from the very beginning after y'all's read to the first time to the Louisiana Supreme Court.
Yeah, that wasn't my.
It wasn't you, but I know, I know. I think we're on, I think 14 attorneys by now. And then I think.
The prior attorneys did have a final and definitive judgment, but it's a judgment of specific performance. That is permissible under the Constitution. What the judge cannot do, and it's called a violation of the concept of separation of powers, that the legislative branch, that would be your offices, you approved the budget, and you're the only ones that can approve the budget or make any appropriation. The mayor is the executive branch, and he has set duties that are set forth in the Larson Act and under the ordinances. Then the third branch is the judicial branch. And you all have lanes. You're supposed to stay in your lanes. The judge jumped out of the lanes and jumped on both of you and said that you're going to appropriate whatever's necessary to come up with whatever I think you should come up with. That's a violation of the separation of powers. So that's what they, they don't seem to address the fact that specific performance is allowable. You can assess that against the municipality. But what you can't do is say, you're going to make this expenditure. And that doesn't happen. That's why the town at this point in time is not obligated to pay that judgment right now.
And the other thing that's appalling, I think, is very concerning, and I just want to go on record. I'm totally opposed to moving forward with any more legal expenses for this town.
There's no expenses for the town. As I said, the insurers are paying for all of it. You're not paying a dime.
So this is costing the taxpayers time, energy. The taxpayers are paying for the local courts, the appellate courts, the state court. So it is.
They're going to pay for them regardless. There's nothing allocated to this particular.
I understand it. Abita Springs refuses to comply with the order of this court. Frankly, it is making a mockery of the justice system. That is in this ruling.
It's a false statement.
Okay.
If we've already complied with everything that's in the development agreement, how are they not complying? How is the town not complying? Can you answer that?
Because, because the contract between the town and Abita Springs.
Right.
They're in violation of the contract.
No, they're not. They did everything. They did everything.
Sewer issue was not in the initial lawsuit.
No, it was not.
Thank you.
Because it didn't come up before.
Aye. And that's what this judge.
The prior mayor had submitted false information, and that's how it all started. So we're trying to unravel that mess. It all goes back to the former mayor.
They speak about, I mean, when the new administration comes in versus the old, and they mention that in this report.
They don't mention what Mayor Lemons did previously. They don't go, anything that's adverse to the developer, they skip over. You'll see that everything is left out of it, and we're going to bring that out in our petition for rehearing.
Does the petition for rehearing go to exactly the same judges or to a different panel?
Same three judges. That's why it makes it difficult. They have to admit a mistake.
So if the sewer capacity was not part of the first lawsuit, is it going to be able to be included in the future?
Well.
It's not what the original ruling was ever about and whatever the original case that was presented was about.
The impasse.
It came in later.
Right.
Will they allow that? Or are they just saying, that's your own problem? We're not, this isn't, this case isn't about sewer?
They've attempted to do that, but if the facts, as they are set forth, they reveal that the developer is the one that's holding everything up because they can't get an engineering report that says the sewage treatment facility and infrastructure will work, and that's required in the contract. So if you enforce the contract, then the developer has to come up with this engineering report as, along with the ordinance requiring the same type of engineering report, and they won't do it. That's the impasse, and that's what we'll have to show to the Supreme Court, I feel.
Is it true that the contract requires the development? Do we have an engineer certified that the infrastructure necessary within the confines of the development is installed properly? And that the line that brings it from the pump to the development completion is installed properly? That is the extent of what they are required to do on the contract?
That's a false statement. It's both.
My contract says.
I've read it, too, and it doesn't say that. It has two different elements to it. One is the infrastructure within the development, and one is the connection. The connection is in the ordinance. By the development agreement wording, they have to follow the ordinance, and they haven't followed the ordinance.
What supersedes what?
The ordinance.
The ordinance?
It doesn't supersede, it's both. The ordinance will supersede a contract.
What takes precedence, the contract?
The ordinance.
The contract stipulates that it supersedes the ordinance.
No.
Yes.
It says that to the.
Mr. DeHemecourt, if you're going to talk, please go to the mic and say what you have. What?
Or just, they're passing one so that somebody can have it.
Do you want to pass that around?
We have a mic for the audience.
Well, he's finishing.
Yeah, let Mr. DeHemecourt finish, then.
I think somebody else was talking.
Oh, okay.
Just for point of information, EJ, maybe the sewer would not come into my house, but for about 15 years, the sewer's been all over my yard, and my house has smelled like sewer. It hasn't happened since some of the new changes were made. But I'm the one affected by this, and my house has smelled like sewer before. I just wanted to be real clear on that. Thank you.
Yeah, well.
It's Sissy Wigan, Levison Street, Abita Springs. And raise your hands if you would like to speak.
So, so anyway, I regret that that's happened to you. So since they lined the sewer, you don't have the smell anymore?
I think sewer's been a terrible thing. That's the reason why it's probably not going to be able to come out. But I have not smelled it in my house since.
Yeah, because they did line the pipes to correct all those leaks. That's why they did it. If it's coming out the manhole, you might have a blockage somewhere. And I think our town maintenance. And I think our town maintenance guys should look at that and see. They could run a camera or something to see why it's backing up there.
Well, first, let me clarify one thing. We, we didn't, they didn't do all of the pipes. We didn't line all of the pipes. The ones that needed to be lined and that were the worst, we lined. And the smaller circumference pipes that are dumped into by bigger pipes, which then supercharge that line to 100%, is not two or three pipes. It's two, three, four hundred feet of pipe.
Hi, my, my name is Byron Arman again. I, I seem to recall many years ago that there was a sewage lining project that was designed to address the, and I'm not sure if I got the right terminology, but the infiltration and whatever. Okay? And once that was supposed to be done, then the capacity of the, of the treatment plants would be enough to handle some of the development. Now, we all know, and, and of course, we have known numbers. I assume that the engineer is calculating final results as if the whole development is done. But I believe that if you bring houses on in stages, then there'll be some point between 1 and 350, I think, is the number of dwelling units that are in there, that you may reach a point where you may have to do a, an additional phase of additional treatment plants or lift stations or whatever. But we have been fighting this thing for four plus years and we've gotten nowhere. We're spending money like crazy on lawyers. We ought to be spending money getting houses built and getting revenue from water and gas and electric.
Again, the, all the legal fees of being paid by an insurer, it has nothing to do with the town.
So the lawyers are doing all right. But-
We're just doing our job.
Nobody else is doing okay. So I, I don't understand why we can't go back to the developers and say, "Okay, let's, you know, let's do this in stages." And, and when they reach a certain stage, they, they reach a point, there's got to be some number that an engineer can calculate that's going to say, "Okay, this is where we're going to get into a problem."
We can't, am I right?
As I understand it, I think America can correct me, but the, at this point in time, the capacity is so limited, just adding a few houses here and there is a problem.
Even single lots are not building right now. And on the lines that are, that are not allowed to build, we are at the point where they're going to have to be allowed to have individual treatment plants on their lots.
Well, because they're stone, they're stonewalling the connection to the sewer system for the town.
No, nobody's stonewalling any connections.
Well, why isn't anything being done then? Why are no, why are no houses being built?
Because, as he explained.
They don't have the capacity at the present time. They are-
I didn't know that. You said, so how do you know?
Because in order to present a case at trial or on an appellate level, you learn the facts of the case. When you learn the facts of the case, you learn something as basic as that, that they're at minimum capacity at this point in time. What we do know is that they're going to redo this wastewater treatment plant and make it more efficient, but it won't increase the capacity because the grant money would not allow them to increase the capacity.
Can't do that.
Mr. Wilson.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Wilson, how many homes in the last six years have been put online? That have been built? Do you know?
This would be, this is not in the case, but I know that from the mayor.
60 to 80?
I don't know. It would be up to the mayor.
60 to 80 homes have been built in the last six years?
No, I wouldn't say 60.
How many permits?
Forty maybe.
Forty homes?
Is it, is it possible to reach out to the, to the, to the town engineer and say, "Well, what is the, you know, with what we've got right now, the infrastructure we've got right now, what, what can be built?"
He said not to expand on it.
They've stopped, they've stopped the building that even a regular resident does on one single lot in certain areas of town that this sewer flows through.
And did, did he say why it can't be built? Did he say why not one house can be?
Yes, because it's a line capacity issue in those areas of town where the sewer flows through. Specifically, the Keller Street area.
Somebody came in here a while back and presented on the screen a layout of the line and there was, there was, coming off of the subdivision, it went to a certain place. And then after that particular place, there was a line that was, that was too small to get to the lift station. But they had other equipment there that would have handled the, the, the capacity there at the time. And the line that was existing there was, was big enough to handle, not big enough to handle everything, but big enough to handle some development.
That was, that was the town engineer who did that presentation. And what he said is, "We don't have the capacity now." And he showed the line just like you said.
Yes.
But the other lines that you're talking about were the alternatives that he came up with that were presented to the developer and the developer just said, "No." You're not, I don't think-
You're not talking, Mr. DeHemecourt. Mr. DeHemecourt. Mr. DeHemecourt.
Just wait your turn.
Wait your turn. Thank you.
Well, I, I've said my piece, okay? I, I just don't see why we can't find some middle ground.
That's what the alternatives were.
Mr. Stein.
The alternative was the middle ground and they rejected them.
It's very, it's very simple, very simple. There's a difference between capacity and capability. Okay? Just because the capacity's there does not mean it's capable of working. What Mr. Arman's talking about is several options that the town gave to the developers and said, "Here's how we can work with you if you want to play ball." They don't want to play ball. The fact of the matter here is, is documentation was falsified from the beginning by someone who had no idea who, what he was talking about. So he should have stayed in his lane. If he would have went to the engineers and let them do their job, we wouldn't be in this situation. So I'm not going to sit here and talk out the side of my neck. I'm going to talk about what I know. As far as the sewer system right now, our public workers work every day, every day to stay on top of keeping that thing problem-free. So no, there's no blockages anywhere. Because as soon as there is one, it's me and them that's out there at 2:00 in the morning cleaning the lines out. I'm, I'm, it has been said here tonight. That's untrue. Okay? It's dilapidated. It needs work. This is not an overnight fix. So that's to put it simple. There's a difference between capability and capacity. You can put all the capacity you want. If it can't process that amount of sewer in a 24-hour period, it's going to back up. It's got to go somewhere. It's going to come out the manholes. It's going to go in somebody's house. I'm not an engineer. It's simple science. That's, that's the easy, that's the easy way to explain it.
I totally understand that.
The judge has made it very clear that the proposals that the town has offered were turned down by the developer. Not because the developer doesn't want to embrace those proposals, but because the town was requiring the developer to pay for those proposals when the cost of those proposals is in the document, sir. And he spoke to you about it. You were lead ju, lead attorney at that hearing. The, the town's responsibility is to pay for that, not the developer.
That's a false statement. Under, under the development-
You're saying the judge made a false statement?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we call an error of fact. And that's when you do an appeal, to appeal an error of fact. And then the Court of Appeals decides whether that's manifest error. And that's how we, we proceed in, in the courtrooms. They make errors of law, they make errors of fact, and that's what leads to appeals. And that was an error of fact because he made a false statement. There were a bunch of false statements that were repeated by the First Circuit Court of Appeal as well. So it's all very straightforward. Someone else?
Can I clarify that? So what you're saying is we, the town provided several options. They were rejected. Do you know when that rejection happened?
March of, of 2023.
Okay. And-
After the, the-
According to the development agreement, I'm sorry, I'm just going to finish the question. The connection was to be paid for by Lonesome Development?
The connection, the one that would be the ultimate connection, yes. That was supposed to be paid for by Lonesome Development. What the, these different alternatives are would be the equivalent of that, if that's where you're going. I think that's the issue. That, but the payment for, never, we never got to that point where payment was going to hold up to anything, any progress on this. They were, they never got to a discussion because there were offsets. If the developer does not proceed according to the development agreement and does one of these alternatives, there's an offset because they don't make that expenditure. So instead of spending $900,000 to do the, the one alternative, they get an offset of $300,000 or, I'm sorry, $600,000. The net is $300,000 they would pay for. That was it. And that, the town engineer not only did the engineering calculations, he did the financial calculations and set it all out. And that, that report is available at any point in time if anyone wants to see it. He, he did the alternatives. He showed that the system couldn't handle this, that you couldn't put any more houses online. It's a problem right now. So it's available if you want to.
So just to reiterate, reiterate what you said, you think that the judgment has an error in that it says that the town was not, that the town was supposed to pay for that connection when the development agreement says that Lonesome Development was to pay for the connection?
The development agreement says they're supposed to pay for certain elements of that that are set forth in section 2.1.1 of the development agreement. And it, it says the developer's supposed to pay for this. Abita Springs only has to pay for two of the items. And then the other ones are all supposed to be paid for by the developer. So if you add a new one in that's replacing one that was supposed to be done in the development agreement, normally you'd have an ovation of the contract where you would have a new contract provision, which would say, "We're going to replace that provision with this," which would solve the problem. But they don't want to do that.
And there's no way outside of continuing to battle in court that we can negotiate with the developer to come to an agreement?
If someone just says, "No," what do you do? I mean, that's, that's where we are. We've tried to negotiate several times and they had meetings with them. Before we came on board, that, they tried that and that didn't work.
Mr. Wilson, one, one last question. I, I attended the hearing in Baton Rouge and I'm trying to read this and I'll have to look up some words every now and then to find out the definition. But it says, "Abita Springs, at its cost, will make any and all required upgrades to the Pearl Street Lift Station to accommodate flows from the PUD." Finally, Lonesome-
Where are you reading from?
Page four. "Lonesome, at its cost, will install all necessary sewer lines and lift stations within the property pursuant to the PUD plan." Is that not correct? Is that a mistake?
That's part of it, but there's other obligations in there. You're skipping over some of the other obligations.
Well, for the connection-
The connection is the big one.
So who pays for the connection? Lonesome, right?
Right.
Okay. And after they make the connection, when you go toward the town of Abita Springs, and Mayor Curtis, correct me if I'm wrong, from the connection to the plant, whose responsibility is that?
That would be the town's at that point, but that's existing infrastructure. The problem is, if you make that connection, that'll cause the environmental disaster.
I, I understand, I, I just, I just want to understand the financial part of it and who's responsible for what.
Yep.
So all the stuff within the development, Lonesome's responsible for, correct?
No, the, the, some of it, Abita's responsible for.
Well, it says here that Lonesome, at its cost, will install all necessary sewer lines and lift stations within the property pursuant to the PUD plan. Is that not correct?
Right, but you're, there's several elements in here. Then it says, "Abita Springs, at its cost, will make any and all required upgrades to the Pearl Street Lift Station to accommodate flows from the PUD."
Right.
Abita Springs did that. They've already complied with that.
So all, the Abita Springs, the town, we're finished with all of our-
Yeah.
And what needs to be done by Lonesome?
They need the engineering opinion.
What connections need to be made or do, what needs to be, besides the engineering opinion?
The, where it says install-
But this order says-
Where it says, "Install a 12-inch sewer force main from Abita Springs' existing lift located at Pearl Street, the Pearl Street Lift Station, to Abita Springs' sewer treatment plant as per the plans and specifications provided by Abita Springs." That's the one they haven't done yet.
All right, and then it goes on to the next sentence.
But the big one is the engineering opinion, which they can't get.
Okay.
And then it goes on, I think there's another one. At the end, it says, "Lonesome shall obtain the approval from the Abita Springs engineer of the plans and specifications, including the diameter of the force main prior to the installation being commenced." That's the opinion. That's right in the contract and they can't get that.
Just want to be, only to be clear, we're all on the same page.
All right. Your judgment says that there's no factual error or legal error presented, all right? In the judgment, all right? So how-
Well, they're saying they disagree. Is that what you mean?
They're saying that their, their decision was based on no factual error or legal error.
Right.
All right? And that he needs to get fitted for his new outfit, all right? So my question is, you're going to go back to the same three people.
Right.
You're going to go back to the same three people and say, "Hey, guys, all of y'all made a mistake." What's the probability of that success?
I've done it before.
What's the probability of that success?
I would say it's around 10% or less. But you have to do that in order, the Supreme Court, when you, when you go be, can I finish?
No, I'm not saying nothing.
When you go before the Supreme Court, they'll say, "Did you bring this up on rehearing before the, the lower court?" And if you say, "No," well, they'll say, "Well, we're not going to address that."
Back to them, yeah.
Okay, so this is the step to get to the Supremes?
Correct.
Okay.
You have to exhaust all aspects of your appeal.
Any other questions?
One last question.
Okay.
How long before he goes to jail? It's a real question.
What do you mean?
How long before he goes to jail? There's, there's an order in here that says he's to be incarcerated.
I will move for a stay with the First Circuit and also with the Supreme Court. So until everything's resolved, they should grant the stay.
They should or they will?
They should. The last few times I've been before the Supreme Court, it's a pretty reasonable bunch, particularly the Chief Justice. So I would think they would.
So I guess I missed something, but so where is the culpability in this? That from the very beginning, mistakes were made, lies were told, whatever it was, where this, that this contract was based on. Is there no culpability for the previous administration or whoever signed or didn't sign?
In terms of how the courts view administrations, it's still all the, the administration, even if it's, it's perceived as a continuity of leadership, even though if you, when you have a change of administration. But your point is well taken, though, on the, there's, the culpability is, is a mutual mistake here because both sides thought that there, or represented that there was capacity when there wasn't. So we're going to file a petition for nullity in the district court to show that this is, the whole contract is null because it's based upon misrepresentations. So that's the, going to go on, on the side.
Yeah, you mentioned that last time. I, I, I.
Nullity means that the.
Where, where are we on that?
We haven't filed it yet. We needed to get authorization from the insurer. So we did.
I thought you said they just cleared you.
Right.
So you'd need to get authorization?
No, we got it.
They had to get.
Just recently.
Right. Like this week.
Ah, okay.
Did, did you say that, that somebody validated, confirmed that what was in that handwritten letter was not valid as far as the capacity of the lift station? And was that a town engineer or?
Yes. Town engineer looked at the, the scribbles and said it's all wrong.
Okay, but did the town engineer actually ever go out to the lift stations or the treatment plant, whichever one was of inadequate capacity, and do his own evaluation? Or did he just look at a piece of paper and say, this is not right?
No, I don't think you're understanding. He goes out all the time and does that. What he did provide is on March 30th of 2023, he provided a phone book thick report, which included a lot of the diagrams that you saw when he did his presentation here. And in that report, he sets out all the calculations, he sets out all of the possible alternatives, and he says why this won't work and why you can't add more houses in the area because of this. It's all there. The report is public record.
Is that, that's, where, where is it located?
We have copies. We can just make it available online or whatever.
I'd like to get a copy of that.
I think it's, it makes sense because it, it's good reading. I mean, it just sets the whole thing out.
Right, right, okay.
The, the nullity thing.
Yeah.
Does that go through a completely different court?
Well, we're, we're having discussions on that. If it, if it's going to go back to the same judge, I think we're going to have some issues there.
I'd shop that around if I could.
The 22nd JDC does not have a rule that a related case has to go to the same judge. And we've done that before.
So if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong.
Like federal court, you do.
Okay, so, correct me, but correct, correct me if I'm wrong. If it, let's just say we got lucky and it goes to a different judge and you get the, you get it granted that it's, that the contract is nullified, does all of this just go away?
Everything, the judgment goes too. The, the $5 million judgment goes, the attorney's fees, everything goes.
It just gone?
Yeah, it just evaporates. It's as if it never would occur.
Do your best work, my friend.
Yeah, but when the town engineer did that presentation and he clearly identified the line that was undersized, at that time, he didn't have an estimate for the cost to replace that line. So my question is, do we now know how much that will cost? And has it been budgeted by the town to replace the existing line that was undersized?
I don't think, to my knowledge, there hasn't been a proposal to replace that line because it's problematic, that they could try to increase it, but they still have a problem with the gradient and with the amount of pressure that they can push through it. So the idea was to come up with something that would just leave that line behind, as I understand it. That's how he presented it. Does that answer your question?
Sort of kind of, because I mean, he had.
They, they had already done what they could to repair that line previously, but it, it's, they had some other alternatives, but they, they were not the best alternative. So I don't think he priced it out, but it was not going to be as effective as the other two that were direct lines to the Arrowood.
And we have priced those out?
I'm sorry?
And we have priced those out?
Yes.
You're talking about the line that were already put into Arrowood. Because he clearly showed one section of piping that was eight inches and it needed to have a 10-inch capacity to handle the new waste coming from the new thing. And when I asked him in the meeting, do we have an estimate on what's going to cost the town to replace that line because it's a town line? At that time, he, he had not had one.
Right, he still does not because when they evaluated the alternatives, they had the two top alternatives were related to the Arrowood facility. So they didn't price that out. If they're not going to do it, if it's, it's a, an alternative that was not accepted, then there was no reason to do a, a price estimate.
But it was my understanding that even if we connected to the Arrowood facility to bring on the Lonesome Development, it still would have to go through an undersized pipe, that there's no way either we have to lay a new pipe from Lonesome to the lift station or replace that undersized pipe.
That's correct.
He made that pretty clear and I don't think the town's taken much action to address that undersized pipe.
That, that, those are the two costs. It's going to be a whole new pipe for both, both situations, rather than go with the old one that, that was undersized. And because even if they went to a 10-inch, they had doubts as to whether that would work. So that's why they came up with the two new lines, completely new lines, and those were considered the best alternatives. All right. We can follow up and if the answer's not specific enough, we can get a specific answer from the engineer if you'd like. Well, the litigation is not. The improvements to the wastewater treatment plan are moving ahead regardless of the litigation. They've already received the grant money and that's, that's already underway.
It might be a good idea for us to maybe try to schedule to have the town's engineer come to a, a public meeting and kind of address what the issues are and what some of the resolutions might be. I know that in our 2025 budget that we had proposed, there was some money put in there for us to design possibly a lift station in that area that could push sewer out. We're trying to figure out, the town is trying to move forward in a positive way to solve some of these issues and find ways to be able to let them hook up as quickly as possible. So if the engineer came, maybe he could answer some of these questions better than the attorneys can. And so we can maybe try to schedule that.
For next meeting.
I, I'm getting the, the impression that there's some confusion here between the pipes and whether the pipes can carry stuff and the total capacity of our system, which is at its limit. It won't do any good to have the pipes, that's, changing the pipes is probably manageable for the town, but we don't have a grant that allows us to increase the capacity. And then you're talking big money for, for a larger sewage system, so.
The, the two alternatives that were raised rely upon the Arrowood facility to take on the additional capacity. That's the cure. So you don't have to increase the capacity of the Abida Springs wastewater treatment plant. You just rely upon the, the Arrowood facility. So basically, one was a direct line right to Arrowood and the other was to have the pass-through with some of the existing infrastructure go to the, the Abida Springs plant and then over to Arrowood. But the two solutions, the two alternatives that were recommended both rely upon the greater capacity of the Arrowood facility. If that answers your question. Right.
Okay, we're going to, that's, gentleman in the back with the mask, he hasn't asked a question, so let, let him ask.
So I understand that they, they don't want to use the Arrowood alternative. Is there any way that we could take houses that we are in control of and push that sewage to Arrowood? And that would clear up the lines so the, the subdivision could use what's already existing? Is that a workaround?
That'd be an engineering question. That's outside of my wheelhouse.
I didn't, I didn't really understand what he was saying. Oh, okay. All right. This was supposed to be just a real quick thing and, and Mr. Wilson, I appreciate you.
Is that it?
Yeah, that, that's.
All right, thank you everyone for listening.
Can I just ask one last final question, timing wise? Can you tell us how long these appeals may take or what, what are we looking at?
My personal experience, the petitions for rehearing, given that you go back before the same panel, can turn around in a couple of hours sometimes, they can reject it. But then other times, it can take months. So you don't know if they actually start to look at things, so.
Hours to months.
Yeah, you can't tell. It's unpredictable. But in contrast with the Supreme Court, if they get the writ application, usually takes two and a half to three months to process the writ applications. Then if they grant the writ, then there's briefing, which is usually a 60-day period. And then they set it for oral argument about 30 days after that. And then they usually take four months to five months to decide the, the case. So it'd be like a year, I would think.
Sounds like about a year.
Yeah, if that answers the question. I think it's pretty good. The, the last two, one, I had worse scenarios. I didn't think it was going to fly on those. One was an Oyster lease case. I got hit for $6 million in the trial court and they threw it out entirely. And then they threw out their expert. I didn't think they were going to do that. So that, that was a surprise. So you never know what they're going to do. And then I had a personal injury case, I guess that was the most recent one. Got hit for 2.5 million in that one and they, they hit the damages, they hit the comparative fault and they reduced, my client ended up with a $53,000 judgment against him. So that, we're pleased with that. So, but they, this particular panel of justices does listen. And sometimes, you, I've been before them in the, in the older days when they're nodding off and, you know. So, and then I've, I've been in front of them when they, they're just sitting there like sphinxes and they're just staring at you and nothing happens and that's a bad sign. And, but that one actually went well too. That was, I got hit for 1.2 billion in that one. That was representing the state and we got that thrown out. There was a zero on that one. That was another Oyster lease case. So I have confidence in, in what we can present. And I think there's a, there's a number of constitutional issues in here that are, are really something that they would pick up on. Because as they describe themselves, they're not a, a court to correct errors. That's where you do that at the Court of Appeals, that is factual errors or small errors of law. They want to make policy statements. And if the policy statement is that if a developer is displeased with a situation, that he has the right to send the mayor to jail in any situation, that's a bad precedent. And so that's a big policy decision I think they'll take a look at.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Okay, moving on here, we're going to go to roll call.
Here.
Right, okay. Any agenda modifications?
No, not agenda modifications, but I do want to take a moment to thank Alderman Contoy's for stepping in after the passing of Alderman, Jimmy Westersoul, and congratulate Alderman Contoy's on her victory and her bid.
That's right. Congratulations. Okay, so no modification of agendas, all right? Need a motion to accept the November 19th, 2024 meeting minutes?
Someone.
They have a first?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, good. New business, number one. Discussion of the resolution requesting assistance from Louisiana Legislative Office regarding best practices for compliance with Louisiana Budget Act, open meetings law and the Larson Act for the town of Abida. Alderman Contoy, she want to head this up since?
Sure.
Okay.
So it's no surprise to everybody that we've had differences of opinions over the last year in maybe some of the ways that we conduct meetings and also our discussions and our budgeting practices. And so I just reached out to Louisiana Legislative Auditor's office and they were able to make me aware of some important resources that they have that may help us get our staff, elected officials and community to come together to find out a way forward with those things, budgeting, accounting, how we conduct meetings. The LLA offers educational outreach programs to help local governments. And I was directed by them that our first step in gaining such assistance would be to the requirement of the council to pass a resolution requesting it. So this is our chance to put our words into action, to make sure everybody knows what their job is and give us a chance to all pull in the same direction. So we want to make sure, of course, that we get our finances back on track in light of everything we've been going through over the past couple of years and also our public dialogue back and to be talking about things in the public venue that are supposed to happen here. And it's my sincere hope that we can all be educated to understand our individual duties, to find a shared solution with the help of third-party professionals such as the LLA and a CPA when hired and basically find a way to move forward in a peaceful, legal and transparent path on 2025. So, that being said, do I need to read this whole thing?
This is board discussion, so no, not really. I mean, we, we've all had it. So does anybody else on the board have any comments?
Well, has anybody from the audience seen it or heard it?
It's online, yeah, yeah.
No, you can read it if you want.
Okay, I mean, I think it would be a good idea to read it because, you know, it's a resolution. So the resolution, and I'll abbreviate it if we don't have to read it, dot by dot. I know it's long. It's the resolution requesting assistance for, from the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Office regarding best practices for the compliance of Louisiana Budget Act, open meeting laws and the Larson Act for the town of Abida Springs. Whereas the town of Abida has been struggling with proper legal manner to report, document and correct financial issues since the discovery of theft of public funds, which occurred over a period of several years. Whereas the town of Abida does not currently have a CPA on staff or under contract to regularly review municipal finances. Whereas the local budget, government budget act directs political subdivisions of the state as to the manner in which to budget the political subdivisions, how it should be composed and reported. Whereas the town is subject to the Larson Act, which states the primary duties of the Board of Aldermen are to approve or disapprove the appointment or removal of non-elected chief, clerk, municipal attorney, any department head and a CPA conducting the review, compilation or audit as required by audit law. Whereas the Board of Aldermen must approve or disapprove the annual operating and capital improvements budget submitted by the mayor. Whereas the express or implicit authorization of the board is required for all public expenditures. Whereas the mayor has statutory authority to sign all contracts contingent on the monies being appropriated by the council. And whereas the open meeting law requires the discussion of budget and other town issues be conducted in a public forum. Whereas the council and town administration have not been able to reach an understanding that the municipal funds spent in 2024 and proposed budget for 2025 are in accord with the local budget act. Whereas the fiduciary responsibility of a public official or officer charged with the responsibility of planning, adopting, amending, implementing the budget are significant and serious. And any public official who knowingly or intentionally adopts, amends or implements an adopted budget, whereas the expenditures exceed the funds available, may be found guilty of malfeasance of office and subject to the penalties contained with criminal statute RS 14134. Almost done. Whereas the goal of each Alderman of this town is to work with the town administration to correct any previous misunderstandings or misinterpretation of these regulations to bring the procedures, meetings and budget into accordance with Louisiana law. Whereas the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Office has provided a means to perform the educational outreach for local governments by process of a council resolution requesting said education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town council of Abida Springs appeals to the Legislative Auditor's Office for assistance to educate our administration, elected officials, town staff, town attorney and CPA when hired to navigate a reasonable and legal path forward in matters relating to all items discussed above. Yes, ma'am?
So they conduct webinars and sometimes they do classes from the LLA. And they have the frequently asked questions, documents that are provided on their website. And sometimes they prepare videos to assist with some of these things. Did they indicate if there, if a resolution like that would provide any other means by which they would provide education and if so, what would those be?
Yes, so I made a follow-up call just to be sure, you know, that I could explain further what the options are. And they said, of course, they can come and just do a presentation. Everything that they do would be an open public meeting. So whoever we want to invite, including the public, is welcome to come. They suggested that, yes, all of our lawmakers and our staff who are involved in these things should be available. They can do presentations on the, the acts that I, you know, the Budget Act, the Larson Act, how to conduct public meetings. So those they can do in just sort of a presentation format, but they said they could extend it to, you know, several hours and do a Q and A specific to our town and our issues. We could also reach out specifically for further legal advice. And I'm flipping this because she told me there's a different department called Local Government Services and you could ask for specifics on accounting, best policies and procedures and advisory services. And so they gave me some follow-up emails after we, you know, discussed it and assume we are going to pass this, that we could send to. I also asked about timing for it. I mean, obviously, we're at the end of the year and they said there's no way they're going to get something done before December because they have statewide budgets that they have to get together. But they said if we were able to pass it in our January meeting, we could get assistance in January. They try to be very, what's the word, responsive. So I think basically it's almost like we can ask for specifically what we need and they gave me some keywords, you know, in our request. And of course, the follow-up would be via email to Mr. Wagasback and then he would identify which staff members would attend. They didn't specify that to me, but I'm happy to give them. They didn't specify that to me, but I'm happy to give them a follow-up call, and I'm sure we could get that worked out real quick.
Is it normal duties, or is there cost involved?
I believe it's totally free. It's part of their, I mean, it's their job to help us. And they said other towns, like St. Bernard, did a more specific one where they came out and really did kind of deep dive. So it isn't just sort of like the dog and pony show of this is the Larson Act. We can really be more, because I know it's difficult with a small town, trying to do the open meeting laws correctly, and you can't have more than two people together, and how do you have a dialogue about anything when you can't have more than two people? But, you know, we've just been struggling with some difficult concepts over the past year, and also modifying a lot of the ways that the budget was being put together and, you know, dealing with, you know, what's happened in 2023. So I feel like we're a little behind the eight ball, and I'm tired of us fighting amongst ourselves. We're just going to call for help and then all get on the same page so that we know what the rules are and make sure we can all follow them, you know? It's time to get back in step.
They provide great training, that the training that we've done with fire, with LLA, you know, has, you know, really been top-notch, that they're, they're good people.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments from the board or public?
Do we get to vote on us tonight?
No, it's just a discussion.
This is the question, yeah.
I think that this is a good idea and a good approach. Past few years have been very rough, and it's been difficult for the town. And we need something like this, I think, to pull everything together and get us moving forward. We all really love our town, and this is an opportunity that we should take advantage of, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. I do believe that the public is going, of course, you can come out and listen, ask whatever questions you may have, but it will be an education for all of us. And as we are a growing town, and we're doing all our master planning, and now we have all these big infrastructure projects, there's going to be a lot more complicated stuff going on than, say, 10 or 15 years ago. So it's important that the public understands that we know our job, and they also know when they get to participate, and everybody knows, you know, how to make the government run smoothly.
Go to Mike.
Am I to understand that for them to come in and do these presentations, it needs a vote from the Aldermen?
For the resolution, yes, sir.
And they couldn't do it in December, and they could do it in January. Is this not the December meeting? And if we do it in January, then they wouldn't be able to get to us until February?
Well, no, we could possibly vote on it the first week of January and get something finalized with them and a date set in January.
And the reason we can't vote on it tonight is?
It was an introduction of a resolution.
It's just an introduction of a resolution.
Yeah, it's just the introduction for discussion, and we can vote on it in January, but that will also give us time, if we're going to get a CPA under contract, for them to at least get started looking at something, if we're able to do that. So I don't think it's a bad idea that maybe it happens in mid to late January. Certainly, I don't want to kick it further than that, if possible. So that's why I pushed to try to at least get the discussion to happen tonight.
And if we get the resolution, it's going to move forward positively. I mean, maybe that's a call that we can say that, hey, on the January 7th meeting, we're going to pass it, and it'll be, we'll be ready on the 8th. So that could happen maybe as well.
So this will be on the agenda for January's meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, there it is.
First of all, I think it's an excellent idea. I was going to say something else, but I forgot.
That's enough. We'll take all the support you got. I mean, it's basically an offer for free education, a way for us to come together, so...
I know what it was. A while back, I did some prodding around in the Legislative Auditor's website and came across a spreadsheet that's a template for a municipality to start with, very similar to our budget worksheet that is being used. The only difference is that they do a projection to the end of the year, even at the beginning, you know, the very first month, it'll start, and it'll do a tabulation of anticipation at the end of year. And it can compare that to the budget every month. So you have kind of a running tabulation of how it's tracking towards the budget. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to thank Alderman Contoyes for this. When I first reached out to LLA, I didn't know who else to get involved, so I said, "Do you mind if I conference in Alderman Contoyes?" So it was a great benefit to the town, and she has spearheaded this of the, creating this group. And I think, as Mr. Day said, the only way to move forward, take the personalities out of it, get the legal authorities, get the experts to come in and make the recommendations. So this is not board versus administration, or board versus public, or administration versus public. We're going to get the facts from the experts to make the recommendations so we can move this town forward in the right direction. Thank you.
If nobody else has anything else, we'll move on to number two of new business, discussion of Legislative Auditor's findings and recommendations. I'd like to start out by saying that it's, if you don't have it, it's on the website. If you want it, you can go to the town website and download it. You can go to the LLA, I believe, their website too, and get it from there. So there's several places that you can get it from. You know, right off the bat, I mean, you know, this has been a difficult task for the town. It's been a difficult task for me. It's been a difficult task for everybody that works in the administration, and the Aldermen as well. So it's been, it's been really rough. There's a couple of things, though, that I did notice in it. The, when you look right on the front, the circle, the line that circled right there, it tells you that, that, you know, the reason the Legislative Auditor responded was because we asked them to respond. We told them and told them what we thought was going on. I would also like to give credit to them because they worked very closely with us on the investigation. Their findings with the information that we had mirrored what we had found as well. And I think because the Legislative Auditor worked so diligently, I think that's, you know, the reason that, you know, we're at the point where we're at now, where they were able to give information to the district attorney, and the district attorney had charged and arrested both individuals that are, that were involved. So, you know, those are just some of the things that I want to, I wanted to touch base on. We didn't really see anything that was, anything new to us. I mean, you know, we had, we went through everything and found everything. The findings that they have and the suggestions that they make, we had already done before the report ever came out, so we're on top of that. I think the CPA, if we get that person hired and get them in here, I think that's going to be a big plus as well. And we're working on that as well. So I'll turn it over to anybody else that wants to have say.
Something that I had been waiting to tell all of you that is in this report, and I'm sure it'll get even more fleshed out, hopefully, in a future trial, was that not only was this, you know, not only were we, you know, stolen from and defrauded, and, you know, you go through this thing, and it's just unbelievable, but the administration was fooled with falsified and altered documentation. So when you're, I know that's one of the questions that, you know, was asked at the very beginning, how could they have gotten away with this? Well, when you take documents and then digitally alter them to where they look completely different, and then hand them to town administrators or auditors to where now they, all the numbers add up to what you, what you were expecting, you can pass an audit, you can, you can, you can pass things around the whole office, and it looks, everything looks on the up and up because you've literally altered documents with special talents. So that was something that was really astonishing to me, that is to, you know, this wasn't just people, you know, pulling money out of some petty cash drawer and going and spending it. This was very, very deep, and it was, you know, definitely people taking advantage of coming, you know, people that came in on a daily basis and saw everywhere that the weak spots were and took advantage of our town's trust, which is just awful. And I really applaud the administration for taking all of the steps that have been taken since then. And you can tell in this, in this report how much cooperation there was to make sure that every, every place that there was any weakness was discovered, figured out, and remedied so that that can't happen again. And now you'd be, it's probably a huge pain in the neck to try to use a credit card around there or get anything purchased. They probably try to make do with reuse their rubber bands because they don't want to have to buy anything new. So I definitely encourage people to read this report because it's pretty astonishing. And definitely go through, go through that with some detail because, like I said, I said, I said early on that you were going to, you were going to find things in here that you weren't going to believe could have taken place, and it's there, so.
Is that right up your finished?
No, I'm good.
So for that specific issue, changing documents and using, what specifically is the town going to do or is there to do to avoid that in the future? I mean, how can that happen? Is it the lack of personnel or double checking or?
Double check, there's, there's splitting of duties. Two people have to verify things now with, you know, looking at originals and so forth. In other words, clearly, she had taken advantage, and it says it in the report, she had taken advantage of, like, during COVID, where, you know, just, okay, well, you're the person that opens the bank statement because you, you're going to come up here and get the mail. We're all working from home, you know? I mean, it's things like that that were taken advantage of because of special circumstances, and then after the hurricane and things like that, that, you know, when, when things were in a little bit of disarray from unusual circumstances is where these kinds of, ah, here's my opportunity, it really kind of came into play. So, yeah, obviously, now that, you know, is not going, routinely will not be allowed.
So does that involve hiring another employee, or will somebody that's already here be assigned to double check, or?
It is, yeah, things are being double checked, and then, like we said, if we're going to be using an outside CPA firm, that will be another layer as well.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, you can't, no way you could get away with, with trying to alter something like that now, and then it just would not get noticed the same way, yeah.
And this outside firm, what you all already had, I think all public agencies have to have an audit, annual audit, and so you're still going to, but that didn't catch it because?
They were altered before the auditor got it.
So the alteration of the documents was probably the most single thing, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
So we've added a, a lot of separation of duties into it now. The people who work in the finance department do not go to the post office. We don't get the mail. We don't open the mail. We don't bring the mail to be mailed. And I've taken over a lot of the responsibilities in that department. There's only one credit card. It's in my name. I reconcile it, and then there's four people behind me who also reconcile and go over it and check it. I don't write any purchase orders, so the person who has the ability to enter and cut checks does not issue any purchase orders. It was always a one-man finance department. Now we have a finance clerk. We have another person who has several different duties, one of which was to take the human resource person, portion of that, which includes payroll and benefits, and so that adds another layer. And I think that we've found that when you've got five pairs of eyes looking at one thing, and it goes through all these different steps, that the protections are in place now. And I think everyone who's involved now has a much better understanding of the town's finances.
Ms. Berry, I think moving forward, hopefully, we'll do in 2025, it'll certainly be my recommendations, moving forward, that the board gets more information, especially related to finances. There were some things in the auditor's report for 2021, 2022 that wasn't picked up on. There were some things that obviously were falsified in the way the documents that she submitted for this report. It'll be an interesting process moving forward, and it's not that much money. I mean, the money that was stolen, but I mean, we don't have a $50 million budget with hundreds of employees, so it should be something that should be very easily resolved, and especially now that we'll have the LLA coming in. Hopefully, that resolution will pass in early January to assist.
Mayor, you might want to mention my case in charge.
Well, yeah, the two of them, I think I said earlier, they were arrested in charge. They, they were charged. I think they're both out, two on bond right now as well. And, you know, we also have a civil suit filed against them as well to recoup the other part of the money that we haven't gotten. So that's moving forward also.
Do we have a date for that trial, or has any of that been, nothing?
They haven't, they haven't come up with anything yet.
I have a question. Tracy Kenan from on Leitherson Street. Do, is it standard practice to then have background checks for town employees? Was it and is it now?
It is now. It wasn't, it wasn't a background check like that. I mean, you know, we didn't, you know, it just wasn't done. Now we have background checks for everybody.
Mainly just one question, my curiosity really. In that report, it mentions repeatedly that there are possible federal crimes committed as well. So I was wondering if there was any update at all as to whether any of the federal law enforcement are looking at it, working at it?
They won't ever make a comment on an open case.
Yeah, they, they won't say anything, and we went to the district attorney's office.
Friday.
Friday, yeah. And they didn't even, they didn't even recognize that the federal people were even involved at all. You know, they, they both, everybody is just kind of playing it close to the chest, you know? They're keeping their cards close to the chest. They're not going to say.
And you mentioned that the warrants were served, and they were arrested, and you believe they're out on bond as well.
Right.
In, in pursuing them for damages, is there associated with that, an attempt to recoup actual items? I'm wondering about that drone. That sounded kind of cool.
That what? The what?
One of the items that was improperly purchased. One of the items that was improperly purchased was a $1,000 drone.
Oh.
One of many.
Anybody else?
That's it. Okay, hearing none, we'll close out new business and go to old business. And old business is the consideration adoption of the instrument 2024-007 and ordinance to establish the town of Abida Springs operating budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year, January 2025, ending December 31, '25. Comments?
Well, I don't know. Do you think we should wait until we get all the other things going in January before we pass this budget?
Are you, you asking me?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think that's completely, that's completely up to y'all.
Okay.
You know, I, I, I would think that we could have the CPA onboard by January 1. I would think. There again, I don't know. So that's a board call.
Maybe not Tuesday.
What's, what's that?
Eat your cabbage and come on in. Right.
I mean, I don't mind giving a generic. I assume that you have a more specific.
You can go first, either one. Go ahead.
Personally, I feel like we've had nothing but questions after questions. There's been a lot of pushing back of the initial public discussion of the budget because you're dealing so heavily with what was going on with the theft and trying to play catch up on 2023. We were changing the format through most of 2024. We didn't meet for the first time until November and, you know, it's been a whirlwind trying to get on the same page and we obviously don't have agreement on just some of the processes to create the budget. So we know that we're going to be bringing somebody in to help us with that. The state law has, you know, provisions for if we can't approve the budget by the end of the year, you know, there's ways that we can work around it. So I think the prudent thing to do is make sure we got it right because as my resolution stated, there are serious legal repercussions to this board passing a budget that may not be correct. So I want to take my duty seriously and make sure I understand what we're passing.
You may have covered some of the things I was going to mention, but you know, as elected officials, we have the fiduciary responsibility to not only approve a budget or deny voting for a budget, but equally, if not more important, to monitor and affirm that the approved budget is being spent accordingly and that we are not obligating the town of Abida Springs to incur expenditures outside what was approved by the budget. There are some documents that I have requested that I haven't received. I think some of the hiring has exceeded some of our budget for salaries. The request for the third party has already been spoken about, was postponed throughout the year and resulted in inability for the administration, the council to come to an agreement of the 2024 expenditures and the 2025 budget. The continued postponement, and I think Alderman Contoys just spoke of this, of conducting public discussions until the 11th month, prohibited thorough evaluation of expenditures, forecasting, year-end projections, and did not allow for consensus between administration and the Board of Alderman. All these actions have hindered the public from fully understanding and participating in establishing the priorities of how monies are spent, resulting in more erosion of the public's trust in town government. There is a remedy for this as Alderman Contoys mentioned. It's revised statute 391312 and it states, "If at the end of any fiscal year, the appropriations necessary for the support of the political subdivision for the ensuing fiscal year have not been made, then 50% of the amount appropriated in the appropriations ordinance or resolution for the last completed fiscal year shall be deemed re-appropriated for the several objects and purposes specified in the appropriations ordinance or resolution." I don't foresee, unless something comes up that this board is not going to support Alderman Contoys' resolution of bringing on the LLA to help us get all on the same page. I have a third party, non-bias, that knows more than we know about budgets and passing budgets and meetings and public, open public meetings and the Budget Act. So my recommendation would be to wait until after we get everything lined up, complete our expenditures for 2024, get a complete list of everything and have a CPA firm and have a date scheduled for the LLA to come in, have the discussions with us, explain some of the things. It was just the other day, Alderman, Boudreaux, myself went and met with Mayor Curtis and Town Clerk Dufresne, and it was, we cannot go in individually, not together. Alderman Contoys, Alderman Tomplay, and myself cannot go in individually and speak to them about the budget. That is creating a walk-in quorum. The perception was we could not go in three at a time. We cannot go individ, three individually because that's creating a walk-in quorum. And that was explained, Ms. Schaefer was on the, we had a conference call with the legislative auditor and she confirmed that we cannot do that. So there's a lot of things that we're going to learn from the LLA that we're not aware of, that we need to be aware of. And knock on wood, I've never been to jail, I've never been arrested, I don't want to start now. So I say we defer until we have our meetings and get some guidance before we move forward with the budget for 2025.
Is there a date that you want to defer until?
No. I think we should ask the 391312 states that we will revert back to the 50% until we have a budget, until we come together and create a budget for 2025.
That's what I'll say.
Excuse me, AJ.
That's what I say.
I can hear you.
I agree with you.
We haven't made a, I mean, have we finished? You've made a, a comment. Mr. Templeton, do you, do you have a comment on the budget?
Doesn't really matter what I think, does it?
It does matter what you think.
Absolutely does.
It absolutely does, which is why I read that section of the code.
No, I mean, if you're saying that you don't like 2024's budget and you're going to not want 25, 25's budget, so let 2024's budget ride into 2025, what's the difference?
If it, if the 2024 budget is not correct, then we can't make it.
We can always, we can always make an amended budget in '25 after we've met with the, met with the people that we want to meet with in '25.
So there's a complicated answer to that. There's a right way and an incorrect way to make budget amendments.
The right way is to pass the budget before the year starts. That's the right way.
No, there's a right way to make amendments.
Yeah, well, I said what I said.
Okay, so you're happy with this and you would pass this?
I would, yes.
Okay.
Stuart? Nancy? Did you have your hand up, Ms. Bernard?
Did you, you have your, I thought I saw your hand up. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. No, I, I just, that's all. No public comment?
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
I, I agree to defer.
Aye.
Aye. Name? It is deferred. Without a date, yeah. Okay, that is the last thing we got on old business. Now we're at the open section. Now you want to talk, Stuart? You're, you're good. Anybody else got anything they want to say?
I previously talked a little bit about mathematics and I know the mayor appreciated that. I'm going to talk about mathematics again. I'm going to talk about the number 32 and the significance of that. This lonesome development issue with the town has gone in front of 27 judges and the town's lost every one of them. Einstein gave us a definition of insanity, which is doing the same thing over and over and over again and expecting a different result. This is the ruling from the First Circuit Court of Appeals with regards to, the mayor being held in contempt. It's not a difficult read. It's 18 pages. What is the significance of the 32? In these 18 pages, the First Circuit Court of Appeal has used the term final and definitive judgment 32 times. They're aware of the sordid history of this case. They outline it in this 18-page decision. They may very well be suspecting some insanity going on and perhaps they thought establishing that this was their final and definitive judgment back in November of 2022, stating that once or twice or three times wasn't sufficient. So they stated it 32 times. Counsel, a couple of months ago, established that he wanted more than one judge to say this contempt was valid. Now he's got three more. That's a total of four. In the parlance of baseball, three strikes and you're out. If the batter refuses to leave the batting box and wants a fourth strike, they typically forcibly remove them. This is a fool's errand to continue doing this, folks. The appeals court found that there was no factual errors, no legal errors. It's stated in the decision. I suggest everybody get a copy and read it. It's public record. First Circuit Court of Appeals, go to documents. The caption is, "Lonesome Development versus the Town of Abida." The decision was rendered on December 13th of this year. There are some options. The town can do a complete turnaround and start cooperating with the contract. The town could do nothing. The consequences will be dire.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Stuart.
When you, when you talk about or read about legal documents, the words don't always mean the same thing that they do in, in common language. And there is no such thing as a final decision in the law. There just isn't. You can always keep trying and I urge the mayor and the town council to continue to try to fight this because it's, it's such a terrible idea and we ought to use, as we are using, every avenue at our disposal. The most hopeful thing that I've heard today was about the possibility of the contract being nullified. If that were to happen, it doesn't matter what the other judgments are. So just, I, I just urge you to keep fighting because we don't want this thing to happen. Thank you.
Hi, I, I would like to, that y'all would consider the recommendation that Janet had to get the town engineer back here and discuss this from an engineering standpoint, what can be done to accommodate this moving forward. I'd like to see us turn legal fees, legal fees into construction fees and spend money building something instead of going in a circle. And I, I fully believe with all my heart that somewhere between 1 and 350, which I think is the full capacity of this development, that there, there exists a number that could be built without changing the piping. And I fully understand that maybe when, when there's the full amount of houses being built, that, yeah, you may have a capacity issue. But that's down the road. There could be 10 or 20 years down the road. So I would like to recommend to y'all to request to bring the town engineer back out here with his spreadsheet and so forth and so on, that he can show us again what he's looking at and maybe we can ask him some questions about some intermediate solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Great idea. And one thing, Mayor, I'd like to understand better, because I've read this document, this appeal or this ruling, if what I've read, it seems like it's just the contractual part of it because the sewer part was not introduced until later on after the Supreme Court had ruled. So I'd like to know more information if we can. Maybe Mr. Dino can elaborate on it. The contractual part of this, that this ruling is referring to versus the actual sewer issue that is not part of this lawsuit.
I was talking to counsel and the sewer part was never a part of the original suit at all. And that, that lays the groundwork for annulity based on mistake. And I think that's the point that, that he was making, which, you know, I, it's something I haven't researched. Mistake is a, is a, a cause for, for nullifying a contract and I think it's an interesting one here. I also think that the contract is really outdated. I mean, as far as where the interest of everybody is because, you know, for instance, Harrison's not, you know, Harrison was going to be extended and all that kind of stuff. I, I, you know, hopefully, I was never one that thought this was going to be settled in court. I always hoped that it would be something that could be worked out. But anyway, I, I think that the sewer capacity is a, a new feature to the whole controversy and it, it creates a whole new legal avenue for the, for the town.
Mr. Dino, there's this one paragraph in here that I was. Somebody else has a question, let me just see if I can find it.
Okay, I, I'm going to speak for myself, not necessarily for the administration as a whole or for the, I'm just going to tell, because I've been like on the edge of my seat all night long. It's not true that the town has not tried to find ways to move forward. We are on project number four, trying to fix the problem so that this development can move forward. We know that this development is going to move forward. We understand that and we are trying to find a way to do that without harming the residents of the town that we already have. To say that there's a certain number of houses that could be built without causing spills, we already have spills and it's recorded. We have a compliance order from DEQ. We are not in a situation where we're overdramatizing a sewer issue. We've already spent $7 million of a DEQ loan and another five that we're spending from a water sector project to fix every single component of this sewer system. So if it were as simple as the mayor saying tomorrow, go hook up, he probably would have already done that because who wants to go to jail over sewer? It's not his decision to make. There's a process that has to follow. There are reports and documents that have to be submitted and those documents have to certify something that is not able to be certified right now. And then that has to go to planning and zoning. And then that has to come to the Board of Alderman, who ultimately will make the decision once it gets to them about signing off on the final plat. It's not that this document just comes to the It's not that this document just comes to the mayor and he signs it and they suddenly can build houses. It's not that simple. So my concern is, there's a lot of conversations about the town trying to stop the development, and that's just not the case. We have been working since 2019 to do projects as quickly as we possibly can to make this happen in a safe way for the town. So like I said, we're on, we've done sewer lines, we've done every lift station, we've built a new pumping station, we're doing a sewer plant, and now we're starting the study for another portion to possibly try to correct these issues. And we have people who have single lots in that area who can't build a house that they want to build unless they put possibly an individual treatment plan on their property because they can't hook to our sewer system. So it's not something that is directed only at the Abita Meadows. This is a problem for the people who own lots who want to build in this area of town. The Long Branch, when they came to do their addition, had to put in an individual treatment plan on their property, even though they're hooked up to sewer with the rest of their, because we couldn't accommodate additional flows, and there were bathrooms in their addition. So it's not something that's directed at lonesome development. We want to be able to move past this. We do.
Do you find it, Sam?
Mr. Dino, it says, "Abita Springs is using circle of logic to argue impossibilities. It indeed creates the impossibility. There are no mutual mistake. There's no impossibility of performance. There's a lack of stomach to move forward. We're performing what must be done to cure the problem, but it is not impossible. It's just that Abita Springs has decided it doesn't want to." Was all that done before the actual, that was a trial court? Was that done before the sewer thing was introduced? That statement I just made, was all that pre-sewer?
To answer your question, I don't know.
I can't take it out of context.
Yeah, go ahead. Sandra.
We're finished talking about the sewer for tonight, but I just wanted to say thank you to all of the administration, the board members. It's a big job, and as we see with the mayor threatening to go to jail, reading your fiduciary responsibilities, Alderman as well, you take on a lot of responsibility for the town. And so it's always good to see that people are here. We want to learn, we want to come back and hear the legislative auditors and what we have to, what our input can be. So just to not ask more questions, not harp on sewer, but to just a heartfelt thank you, and hopefully, moving forward in 2025, we can solve a lot of these problems that we definitely have in our growing town. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I did bring some show and tell tonight, that as you know, we have removed the plants that were at the traffic circle, that, you know, it's due to a couple of different factors. One of them is the construction that is going to be taking place there, you know, with the installation of the donated fountain. The other reason was, originally, we thought we could move the plants to the cemetery to create a meditation garden, but they were, the whole garden was filled with torpedo grass. And that, I did go to a luncheon that Keep Louisiana Beautiful hosted, and there was a DOTD employee there who said that every traffic circle in the state that DOTD has done also has torpedo grass in it. So we may have found the culprit for introducing this horrible invasive weed into the garden. That being said, that we are starting to raise money for a new garden at the traffic circle, that we know we've got some time because, you know, the installation of fountain, you know, has to take place, you know, all of the dirt has to be removed that is there, cannot be reused, you don't want it in your ditch. Trust me, you know, your grass will then be torpedo grass, you know, instead of whatever type of grass you have currently. But we are starting to raise money. You can donate online at keepabitabeautiful.com, our website. You can go to Full Moon, and you can, you know, purchase plants there. You're not going to take delivery of the plants, but they have the same board and the list, you know, where we do want you to write down your name and address so we can acknowledge the donors that we do get. But it's an ambitious goal. You can give, you can mail a check to us. Keep Abita Beautiful, PO Box 1595, Abita Springs, Louisiana. You can give me cash or a check. I will gladly take it. If we're in an event, we do have Square, so we will take your credit card, but please consider making a donation using one of those methods and help us create a beautiful garden at the traffic circle. Yeah, that, so that is my request, and we hope that, you know, it is native plants, that it is the pink muli grass, like we do have at the Highway 59 sign and also at the community garden. It's a native plant, doesn't require much care, and then in the background, you see the palmetto plants that will accept more of the water, the splashing, you know, from the fountain since the, you know, but there's a whole boatload of them. I must admit that you don't realize how big the traffic circle is until you're in there cutting all the plants and removing all of the plants and getting your husband and your neighbor to burn all of the plants because we definitely don't want to bring torpedo grass to anyone's yard or property, you know. It is, it's just wicked. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I did bring my money bag, and I'll gladly accept checks or cash. Brandon?
Do you have any donations yet?
I have some, yes, I do have donations that, what we did is that, that we are taking the money that we raised at the Wacky Reef Auction last Saturday night, you know, and I don't do a very good job of keeping track of what we get. I think we made about $400 at the auction, and then we raised, we unveiled, you know, we picked this up at 1:00 on Sunday, the board from FedEx, and that we raised $450, I think $50, that at the Fata Noelle. So we're almost to 8:50. Ron Blitch advised me to go buy red electrical tape, and I did go buy it, and I will be, we're almost up to the $1,000 mark, you know, that, and that is, I haven't gone over to Full Moon, you know, to see what they have, what purchases have been made at Full Moon, but in the past, when we've had our Christmas wish lists, that y'all have been very, very generous, and, you know, that we appreciate everything that you've, all of the plants that you've purchased for us at past Christmases, and we hope that you can find it in your hearts, in your wallets, you know, a way to perhaps make another donation, you know, to Keep Abita Beautiful, and, you know, that this is, this is our town. I think that you heard tonight, you heard from the audience, we all love this town and, you know, want it to, well, put its best foot forward, so please help us do this.
Thanks, Sandra.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I just wanted to also, just real quick, do a quick little shout-out, as of course, we love our plants, please help out with this project, but also remember all of our local businesses. It's our last chance for sales tax. It's our last chance to really, you know, give the gift of whatever our local purveyors have, whether that's going to the grocery, getting somebody a gift card to one of our restaurants, half moon garden, full moon gardens, all their moons. So please just buy local and help our local businesses thrive at the end of this year.
Just two quick things. A while back, I think that we had talked about the marshal coming and talking about what he does. Is that still a possibility, that he comes to town council meetings and kind of gives us a sense of the things that he's taking care of?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
I'll make sure to speak to him tomorrow about it.
Okay. My only other quick question is, those of you who don't have the joy of going to a million library board of control meetings and parish council meetings about the library, I would simply let you know that there are people in St. Tammany who are trying to take books out of the adult section in our libraries and either get rid of them altogether or hide them behind the counter because they don't like them. I would request that you call your parish council people and the library board of control and say that you would like to make your own decisions about books. Everyone in this parish, and I've been to 40 hours of meetings, so I know of what I speak, everyone in this parish is not straight, white, and Christian. Nothing wrong with being straight, white, and Christian, but we aren't all that. And the library board of control right now is on the verge of taking books out of the library that they don't think are appropriate for our residents. So if you would like to read what you want to read and what you want your children to read, you need to take some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close.
May.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed?